Welcome everybody to our Thursday, November first, twenty eighteen Forest Lake Area Schools School Board Meeting. Let's start out with the Pledge Legions.
Pledge Legions.
Pledge Legions. United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome Karen. If you have any questions about what we do here or try to get done at our board meeting, we have some information over there on the table. Or if you'd like to fill out a green card, if you'd like to speak on one of the topics, one of the agenda items tonight, you can do that as well. Member Clerk, could you please take a roll call?
Member Corcoran, here. Member Morehead, here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Raphael?
Here.
Member Olson is here.
Alright. No changes to the agenda, scheduled and unscheduled visitors, listening session, member Peterson?
We had one question as to whether or not the district would have a response to the insert in the paper that came out and then some other discussion about the overall levy progress.
Alright, thank you. And student achievement, Forest Lake Area Middle School, J.P. Jacobson. Welcome.
Well, thank you and thank you again for inviting me back to join your group. It was just a few months ago when I was here with my friend and colleague Jim Caldwell and we were talking to you about these wonderful ideas that we had for the opening of the middle school and of the high school. And what I get to do tonight is share with you how some of those ideas have actually come to fruition and how those have gone. And so I really appreciate this time and your invitation to do this. First, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about some of the really cool and really important innovative spaces that we have in our building this year, spaces that were gifted to us by our public in the form of the two thousand and fifteen bond. And what you see in the bottom left there is a, our new auxiliary gym where kids are using it every day to get exercise, learn how to live active lifestyles. I mean, that's a space that really gets a lot of use and is so necessary. In the top right, you see our greenhouse, an only greenhouse the way that you might traditionally think of one, but it's our house where our green team of students. And there what you see is two social studies classes working in that space, a space that we didn't have before, where they can come together and work on projects and team up with kids in other sections. You know, and it's a life skill to work in teams that they're going to be asked to do that in the high school and college and in the workplace and our kids are now able to do that. We also have new flexible furniture in our classrooms. On the left, what you see there is an English classroom where kids have just responded to a writing prompt and they're sharing their responses to their peers and critiquing each other's responses within small groups. In the bottom right, you see a seventh grade math class where kids are working in pairs to solve a problem that a teacher put up on the board, an algebraic expression. And then they're comparing their answers, correcting each other's work and then showing that work up to their teachers. So that the teacher here, this is Ms. Chorus Classroom, she gets immediate feedback on how they're doing in each of their classes. You know, you'll see those chairs, the chairs are incredibly comfortable compared to what we have in a lot of our classrooms. And when I was in Ms. Chorus Classroom and I was taking this photo, a moment later she asked her class to say, she asked them, all thirty-six students, on a list, on a scale of one to five, one, it's okay. You know, and five being it is fantastic. How would you rate this new furniture that you have in your classroom? And out of thirty-six kids, the furniture got thirty-four fives, alright? We have a one, four and a half and a one, four point nine-nine, but that's a math class, right? And so I think we're doing pretty good. The average is still pretty high. But we, and you've seen this next graphic before, and so I apologize for putting it out there again, but I think this is so critically important. In addition to having new spaces, new classrooms and new furnitures in the middle school, I think our community is asking for and deserves a high-quality middle school model. And we started two years ago in the same room that I'm standing right now, leading our identity and our transition team, where they, we brought together parents, community members that told us what they want in their school and in this transition. That drove a lot of committee work, which resulted in the summer of two thousand and seventeen, an educational framework that is really our living, breathing constitution. We're going to do what's in that document. And I'm going to share with you some of the things that we're doing right now that represent that commitment. We've got design teams that named, that came together and did a number of things, including naming our middle school. And then last summer, or last spring, we had implementation teams using that framework and that middle school name to put together what we're going to install. And right now, we're in the installation phase of that plan. Because we want to do things that we can see on charts like this. We've got more than seventy percent of our kids that had medium to high growth on last year's MCA reading test and we had almost eighty percent of our kids have medium to high growth on the MCA math test. And as impressive as that might seem, we want to get better. We want to have more and more kids exceed what we expect of them in their classes. We want that to happen. So what are we going to do and what are we doing? So I'm going to organize each of these slides and things that we have accomplished and things that we still have in development. Because this is, like I've said to our staff, this is never, we're never a finished product. We are always evolving, we are always improving. And so we want to continue to get better and our staff has, really believes that. And so what we have here is, in our teaming model, we've got nine hundred and eighty-two kids that today came to school and they call Forest Lake Area Middle School their middle school. And so in order to make sure that we have kids that feel part of a small, close team, we've talked about this, we've got three smaller schools of just over three hundred and twenty kids in interdisciplinary teams. So that when kids go from class to class, the teacher that they have for math and the teacher they have for English and the teacher they have for social studies all know who they are and the teachers can collaborate and talk about those kids. On a daily basis, our schedule now allows us to have those same group of teachers sit down and talk about the kids who might be floundering. So they meet weekly to say, here are the kids that might, you know, that are seemingly disorganized or kids that are not handing in all of their assignments or kids that might be not showing the confidence to ask a question or contribute in class. They're talking about kids that may be not connecting with peers or adults. And they're talking about what can we do, what can be a tier-two intervention to get that kids up, back on track? In the past, teachers didn't share kids on a team, so those conversations were difficult to have. Now, when we have a team, teachers can meet during the day to have those conversations. Because what we know is our teachers are doing fantastic tier-one work. The things that we do for all kids in terms of instruction and building relationships is really high quality. But for the kids that that might not be working with, we need to step it up. We have to try something different. And during these conversations, we have, we put in place solutions that, okay, this is working for me in my classroom, it might work for you and that kid in your classroom. Or we might create a check-in, check-out system. You've heard other principals talk about this. I'm going to take that kid onto my caseload, I'm going to meet with them every morning, make sure they have a pencil, make sure that we talk about what they need to do that day to be successful and I'm going to connect with them at the end of the day. Some kids just need more and we're going to, we now have the system in place to do that. You know, the other thing that I would say is we also have our teachers meeting on a weekly basis, not just with other teachers on their team or their color team, but other teachers that they teach a common subject with. And so in the past, they might have met once a month. Now, we built a schedule where they meet every week to share good ideas, to talk through their data on what they might have got on their assessment, to build common assessment, to do all of these sorts of things. We have teachers that meet on a weekly basis, all the math teachers do, all the social studies teachers do, all the teachers do that every week. And as a way to stay connected and create this guaranteed experience for kids in each of our classes.
What would a tier-two intervention look like?
So like check-in, check-out, like I just talked about. It might say, you know, in my class, he does not work well in the back of the room, so we place him in the front, in the middle, because he's easily distractible, or she is. We might try things like, we might do a, put a guided study hall on their schedule so that they have a time during the day to sit down and do specific work related to, and a teacher can check in on them and help them with through that work. You know, one of the things that I'm sharing with you at the bottom, Board Member Raphael, is that we also are still looking for more tier-two and tier-three interventions. We don't benefit from a lot of, having a lot of interventionists in our building. And so that's one of the things that's still in development. But we do have a place that we can implement some of those things that I just shared.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah. The other thing that I would say is for, we have a, we know that we have two years with every student. And so we want to make sure that those two years are fantastic. And so much like a board might go on a retreat when they come together, we do that with our kids in September of every year. And so we've got kids coming from all sorts of elementary schools, both in and outside of our district. And so in September, we have a retreat where they come together. We make sure that during that retreat, they make connections with other peers, they find somebody that likes who they are and that they like to, can call a friend, and then we build those connections. And at that same time during that retreat, they all make a commitment to making their school and their community a better place through an act of courage. And they write those courage, those acts of courage on a card and they, some kids walk to the middle of a circle of around a hundred and eighty kids and read their act of courage all out. And then we bring those courage cards back to our building, we post them in our hallway and there you can see one of our hallways that is decorated with those acts of courage. And some of those might be, you know, if you were to read those, they say things like, I want to make sure that I recognize somebody who I've not been a friend with before, but that seems to be alone and I'm going to include them in my group. Or I'm going to try to contribute and have better, in class more and have greater confidence in myself that I am a smart kid. Or I'm going to, I've been unkind to other people in the past and I don't like it when people do that to me. I'm not going to do that anymore. And so that we begin to push this term bullying out of our building so that we can create a safe place for kids to learn. I don't think that we have cured it completely, but we certainly have named it and we have minimized it. And we want to continue to work on that. We also have counselors, and I've shared this with you before, that we've got counselors attached to each team, which is a great resources, resource for our building. And one of the, our counselors do many things for kids. And one of the things that they do is they conduct a needs assessment every year. We finished our middle school needs assessment today and we ask all sorts of questions around what kids need from their school. And we use that to drive our decisions. And then some of the things that we ask is around kids, you know, the level of sadness that kids are feeling or things, ways that we can support them. And if we didn't ask those questions, we wouldn't know, we wouldn't be able to connect one-on-one with that kid and that family. Our counselors also run social groups around family change or making friends or these sorts of things. All of those groups are not groups that we say, hey, we offer these groups, sign up for one. We say, tell us what you need, okay, we'll put together a group for what our kids are telling us that they need. We do it that way instead. And it's really working for our kids and I talked a little bit about that last one a moment ago. One of the other things that we really, I've shared this at a high level with this, with the board here, is just coming to a consensus on why we want to grade and assess kids. And we had deep conversations around what a grade should mean. And we settled on a grade should represent what a kid knows and can be able to do. It should be absent as much as possible from any sort of behavior. A behavior really shouldn't be reflected in a child's grade. And one example that I might, I can share with that is if a student were to hand in some work that might not be completely their own, or they were, their eyes might wander during a test. Now, that is a behavior that we certainly want to address, have a one-on-one conversation with the student, talk about expectations, coach them through that mistake and get them on the path to never doing that again. But in the past, we might have also consequence them by saying, you now get a zero for that assignment. We don't do that anymore. What we do is we treat that as a behavior, it might carry a consequence, certainly involves a phone call home. But now we're going to say, but what you didn't prepare yourself for, what you didn't learn, that was too important for you not to learn it. We're going to make sure that you go back and learn it and you redo that paper or you redo that test. We're going to address those two things separately. And our teachers do that commonly across the building. We also have common grading practices, so what extra credit means to one teacher is the same to another teacher. That we don't have kids that are trying to navigate, well, this math teacher grades this way and my English teacher grades this way and my science teacher grades this way. The percentages, the scale is all the same. The way that we approach, you know, any one of these grading policies, they're all the same. We also have opportunities built in for relearning. That what we say here is if a student on a paper or on a presentation or on a project or if they take a paper pencil test, that if they didn't do well the first time or if they didn't get the score that they wanted, that we as a team have built in a relearning process that the student can go through and then redo that paper or that test to get the score that they want. And we don't put a cap on the second or third or fourth tries. Any one of those tries, you can get up to a hundred percent. Because in the past, what we did is we treated, as schools, and I don't say we, but just schools in general, as time is the constant, learning is the variable. Every kid has this much time to learn whatever it is and depending on whether you learned it or not, you got a grade. What we want to do, what we believe is that you need to flip that. That learning is the constant and how much time it takes a kid to learn that might need to be the variable. And that's what we've done across all of our classrooms. Every kid in our building and every one of their classes has the opportunity to go back and relearn something.
Do you find that there is abuse of that? Where you might get a youngster who knows they've got many more chances, so busy tonight, do it another day, whatever, instead of making that commitment?
You don't know, and I'll tell you why. Because we have this relearning process that a kid needs to go through. And so if they don't do well the same time, the right, they don't do well the first time and they think, well, I can just relearn it and then come back and test again, well, that's okay. The objective is still met, that they still learn whatever content that there is. The kids can't just simply retest and retest without having done something in between. They need to make an appointment to meet with a teacher, they go through another learning activity, there might be some reading attached to that, there is some-
So there's some variable in there that they have to-
There is, absolutely. There is an action that they need to do between the first and the second or the second and the third assessment in order for them to make sure that they've gone through and do something that they might not have done the first time. Yep?
So JP, I just want to add that, oh, you didn't raise your hand, Karen didn't. Anyway, I find that very refreshing. I think that's just a healthy structure to learning. I remember when my girls were at Century, often they didn't get their tests back. And my one daughter in particular was always perplexed, never knowing what that, those questions were she got wrong. And I think that when kids have that opportunity to go to that next level and keep learning and learning and learning, why can't we break that glass ceiling? Why are we just, you know, stopping when they can continue to learn that information?
Absolutely. And I would share with you, all of our teachers agree. The plans that I'm sharing with you are not ideas that came from me. I agree with them, but these are ideas that teachers have developed through research and looking at other schools and what experts are saying on these topics and how kids' brains work. I think that the teachers in our new practices agree with what you're saying, absolutely.
I think one of the national conventions we went to had Saul Kahn of Kahn Academy talk and he talked quite a bit about that, showing a lot of research on how that's critical, that, you know, kids are able to catch up and kids will catch up. But then he also was a strong opponent of making sure that those lessons are in a video form so that they can be rewatched by the student and so that when the student goes home, they can, if they didn't do well, they could watch that again, stop at the point that they didn't understand, back up, go back. You know, how are we thinking about recording stuff so kids can, you know, if they miss something in class, you know, they can come back and see it again?
So many of our math teachers, that's a really good question, many of our math teachers have already recorded a lot of their lessons so that kids who not only are talking about the situation that we're talking about now or that they are ill or they have decided to go up north for deer hunting or whatever it is, if they miss a day, that there is a way that they can easily go and relearn or learn that content and feel prepared for the next day. A lot of, what you just talked about, Kahn Academy is a tool that a lot of kids use in math, even at our high school as well. But even our teachers that don't record video lessons have different ways that kids can do this too, absolutely.
Okay. What I like JP is that it's so individualized, which is really refreshing too and that I love the idea of the, between the teachers collaborating about the student because that's where I think we, it's been a problem in the past. These kids have kind of fell through the cracks, they haven't got the help they need. But having that partnership with the teachers, keeping a check on those students, that is amazing.
And when I would, and I would agree, and I don't think that there is any teacher that in our building, and even those in the past that have wanted a kid to fall through the cracks. But when you have now a system and a process by which they can collaborate and connect with their peers and share good ideas and come up with, and come up with solutions for kids, that just works, right? It just works.
And I love that it's a small school within a big school, which I know that the students have wanted and parents want. So we're trying to do that and I think this is just such a great presentation, thank you.
Absolutely. And I'm just sharing the work of others, not mine, so.
It's great though, it's great stuff.
Member Odegaard?
So my question, I don't disagree with the theory about having learning be the constant and time being the variable. But then where do kids learn to meet deadlines, to be clutch, to, you know, you don't have a second chance because, you know, I had to have the company's budgets in today and if I didn't, I'm in big trouble. Now, I'm an adult, you know, these are still kids and we want them to learn. But is that skill going to be left behind? The ability to, you know what, you got to step up, you have to have it done by, you know, this time.
Right. And that is, that is a critical thing to learn, right? And so sometimes that might not need to happen with whether they understand Pythagorean's theorem or they understand the differences between life, plant and animal cells. We might teach what you're just talking about in our advisory curriculum, which we'll all talk about in a moment. Kids, you do need to have deadlines on things, but at the same time, what we teach in terms of content is too critical to say, but you didn't meet the deadline, we're going to move on without you. And that's what our teachers have decided, so. You know, one of the things that we are also in the development phase of is we know that in terms of math, science, social studies, these classes are really important, but there are aspects to an adult, we just talked about one, but others around collaboration, creative thinking, being able to communicate well with others, that those are life skills that I am attempting to exhibit right now. All of you are far better than me, but those are things that we need our kids to grow into. And we're looking for ways that, how we can report out on that, showing kids the growth on those things to parents so that those have traditionally not sat on a report card, how do we do that? And that is something that we have on our radar, that we want to do as a team. The other thing that I would say is we know that we have parents that want to be really good parents. They want to support their kids at the dinner table or whoever it is that they do their homework. And in the past, teachers have spent a lot of time on different digital tools, whether it be Moodle or they have different websites on Weebly or Google Sites or our school and they've all had different pictures and resources up. And for a parent, it's finding which teacher puts what where and which teacher uploads things and which doesn't and these sorts of things. They're all fantastic tools, but they were all different. This year, what we've done is we've really narrowed that list and we've trained our teachers on how to use ParentView and SchoolView so that we create a class calendar that's individualized, personalized for every kid. And this was a lot of work on teachers' parts to say, here are the features within our student information system that we're going to use and we're all going to set it up this way. So get everybody in a room, get your computer out, we're all going to walk you through this process. And so for every teacher, when they have something that happens in their class, they put it up here, they load that on ParentView. And if there is a piece of paper that was handed out in class, they attach a version of that to this as well. So as a kid, when I get home and I say to my parent, yeah, I forgot it in my locker, which may happen from time to time, that conversation, yes. Or I made, I made a mistake and I now I need to get a new copy, but I'll have to get it tomorrow. I can't work on it right now. What they can do and, or their parent can do is log into ParentView or StudentView. Here's an example of a kid's month from the month of September and all the things that happened in their classes during that month and the things that needed to have gone home. So it allows kids to go and find these or parents to find these, even if they're ill and they can download it, print it to the printer and now they have another copy. We also have shared, and you've heard me talk about, that if you, if you learn information during, at one moment and then you have to repeat it or tell it to somebody later on, you're more likely to commit that to memory. So when parents can look at this and say, oh, here, I see that you talked about this in Life Science Today, let's talk about that on your way to play practice or as we're having dinner. Kids now, parents now have an opportunity to initiate that conversation with kids so that they can, they're asked their kid to repeat their, what they learned at school today around the dinner table. This works with people. If you are going to have to go home tonight and explain, what did this middle school principal talk about at the board meeting tonight and you retell that to somebody hours from now or tomorrow, you're more likely to remember this over time. Kids are people, they work the same way. So now we have given parents the ability to do this all through an application that the district owns. And we want to continue to support teachers on using this more and more and more. What a great tool for case managers is when they sit down with a kid in one of their special education classes and say, the kid says, oh, I don't have that, I'll go down to my locker. Oh, no, no, well, we'll just print it out and it'll be right here, we'll get it started, right? Now, case managers know every day what's happening in class. And a lot of this, if you were to look at a kid's calendar right now, they have things, tests and other things posted weeks out so parents know when things are upcoming.
That's great.
The other thing that we know is that we have to support an entire kid's growth. And so we have shifted our advisory from the beginning of the day so now that it is a twenty-five minute block in the middle of the day, offset of their lunch. And we use that time to create meaningful relationships with kids and teach them how to do the same thing, how to support them academically. We go over character traits like grit, perseverance, how to present information, how to meet deadlines, how to do all sorts of things. We use that time for community building. Our, we have a team of teachers that have really bought into this and they write this curriculum and they have it several weeks out so when, and we curate it there. So teachers who teach advisory just go on their day, there it is, they click and there's the lesson ready to go. We also have a very talented science teacher by the name of Janice Brothers who has a wonderful sense of humor and an ability to put together daily announcements in a way that makes both teachers and students laugh. And so, and she puts those on here every day. And so we communicate with our entire student body through the same tool. All of this, by the way, is viewable to each of you or to any parent. If you were to go to our middle school website on the left where it says Advisory Web Page, it would take you to this and you can see all the lessons that we're doing on these different topics every day in our advisories. The other thing that moving advisory to the middle of the day and having an offset lunch has created, or the solution that's created for us is we no longer have any split class where kids would go to class, go to lunch and then come back to that same class. We no longer need to do that. For any teacher, that would be difficult, we don't do that anymore. The thing that we're still in development is we have made great progress in developing a comprehensive organization system for kids. We've got a list of supplies and a way to organize kids that we share with parents when we, and we have it out there. We, at this point, we are finding, we're looking for ways to embed clear lessons on that early in the year. So when kids come to us from the elementary school in seventh grade, early in the year, we show them how to organize and stay organized. And we're going to, we're looking for a place to teach that in our full day that we already have, but we have some ideas on that, that's going to be upcoming. Just some other important shifts that I would share with you is in the past, we've had conferences or an advisory experience that was really, kids were more passive in that experience than what we would want them to be. We know that when kids are greater stewards of their own education, their goal-setting, they're reflecting on the grades that they have and they're making, they're grading plans and how they're going to improve those and do better, that they are leading conversations with the adults in their lives around how their school is going and what they want to do with their life. When we do those things, kids are more bought in. And we're sending to the high school kids who have a better idea of how to do school and do school well and what they want to do in high school and in the future. And so in advisory- And so in advisory, every fall, our kids go through a goal-setting activity. It's pretty comprehensive. It takes several days. And then we use that as a conversation tool during our fall conferences. And then during that conferences, they, uh, parents get comments, they get information from each of their child's teachers, that again, the kids can, can comment and, and talk about why the teacher is saying that about them in class. We're also really looking at our transition activities, the way that we bring our sixth graders from elementary school and into the middle school. Uh, we are continuing to do a lot of the same things that we've done in the past in terms of a parent orientation night. We bus all district sixth graders in, and we give them a tour of the building led by older middle school students. One of the other things that we're adding this year is that our, we, our elementary principals are from, for years and years have gotten phone calls or drop-ins by elementary parents that are just really concerned about the transition from their, their child's only school ever to now a secondary school, and how is that gonna go? And there's been enough change in our, in our middle school from what the junior highs were in the past. Good change, but it's changed. The people don't really know what that is yet, that parents naturally have questions. And so between now, I, my first, my first appointment is next Wednesday, between now and, uh, winter break, I, we, we're gonna be going out, I'll be going out to every one of our elementary schools and meeting our parents where they're at, and having just unstructured, there's no PowerPoint like the one you're looking at now, there's no presentation. It's just coffee and cookies, and me having a roundtable with parents that have questions about what our new middle school program looks like, and have concerns about their particular child that I can meet and talk with them one-on-one. So that if a parent from Scandia, or for Columbus, Wyoming, Lino Lakes, want, any one of our elementary schools, if that parent says, you know, I'm really, can you talk about the way that you make sure that kids don't feel alone? Or, your, your school looks so big, how do you make it feel like personal for my child? Or here's something I want you to know about my kid, and can, can, I just wanna put that on your radar. We, that we're having those conversations earlier in their sixth grade year, so they feel like that handoff from elementary school to middle school is gonna go really smoothly. That's happening this year. Uh, we are finding, we're look, we, we con, for years, we have saw that in elementary school, parents are involved, they're in the building, they're, uh, putting up bulletin boards, they're helping teachers with all sorts of projects, they're going on field trips. But for the phenomena there is that once kids get to middle school, that drops off, whether parents feel like, oh, my child doesn't want me there anymore, or there isn't that same need. And that, we talked about several summers ago, that we wanna bring our community into our school, right? So they see the great work that's happening every day. So we have a group of teachers that have created what's something called the One Good Hour Project, where we're, we're coming up with ideas that our parents can get involved in their school. That might take one hour, sometimes a little longer, but we, we wanna bring them in with just one hour. And, and they can do things, all sorts of things around our building. We want our parents walking through our hallways, seeing the great things that are happening in our classrooms, listening to the conversations between kids and, and, and adults, and then feeling like, hey, you know, we really do have a very good middle school. And they're carrying those conversations through their book clubs, through their, their peers, and that word is getting out. The other things that we're working on is continuing to find ways to talk, have an articulated student learning mission. And what I mean by that is that when we talk about the way that learning happens in our classroom, what we want kids to be able, what kids are doing with their learning, that we've got a succinct, high-quality statement that clarifies what learning looks like. And what learning might look, like, might look like from time to time is a teacher giving information and a kid's listening and writing it down, but what we want it to be far more important and impressive than that too. And then something that we can put out there and say, this is what we're gonna do. This is our mission. That we're gonna put that out there, and, and we're gonna create that. We also, um, have, have talked about just having a, a comprehensive instructional toolkit thing. Here are the, the high-quality instructional things that we do as a building, uh, that we train people on. This is, this is our, our way of doing things, that all of our teachers feel comfortable with, and, and it's just really clear on. So, I'd love, that was a lot. It was probably longer than what you expected. I apologize for that. But if you had any questions, uh, I would, more than the ones that we just answered, I would really love to answer those.
Yeah.
I just want, Mr. Chairman, um, when you were going into the elementaries, how are you going to get, um, the parents there? I mean, what type of a arrangement are you gonna have to put the parents?
Yeah, so, uh, so what we have done is, we've worked with every one of our elementary principals to talk about what might work best for their building. And so in, for example, at Columbus, uh, the PTO is going to be sponsoring a time for, right, right, right after their PTO meeting, for parents to come in and either participate in the PTO meeting or come in afterwards and meet with their future middle school principal. And the PTO is sponsoring it, and so I'm gonna do it that way. At, uh, for example, at Scandia, I'm coming to their winter concert, uh, in, during the day, and right afterwards, we're gonna, I'm gonna stay for about an hour, hour and a half, and, or as long as it takes to answer questions. So each elementary principal is thinking about, what's the best, most convenient way to pull the most parents in, at least the ones that wanna come and meet? Naturally, there are some that have older kids, they're already comfortable with the program. It's not a required meeting. It's just for those that wish, hey, I wish I, I knew who the principal was, and I could ask him or her a question. That's what we're trying to do. And so for each building, it might be different.
I have a couple of questions. I wanted to tell you to thank your team. I think this work is phenomenal. I've been getting your updates and going to your parent meetings. I think the work that you've done is huge, and I hear about it from the parents in my area. I hear a lot about the flexible furniture. Um, tested it out myself. But I, I think that this work is just incredible. It's just a whole movement to engage families, to engage the students, the parents. Um, you retuned your conferences. I mean, so many changes that I think that just are evolving into just that, that strong base of support for kids and families and staff, and everybody's just kind of rallying around it. But, um, how did you feel like the conferences went and the changes that you made?
You know, I would say that the major, it was, it was really fun to see that parents were there. They got in. They met with their kids, their, their, their child's teacher. The, the children themselves led the, the, the discussion for those parents that brought their, their, their students with them. There were some parents that didn't bring their students with them, and that would probably be a learning piece for us, is that we wanna just make it so important, so critically clear, that we want their child to be part of and lead that conversation. Uh, and then they were out within forty-five minutes, rather than standing for hours in line and waiting to talk to each teacher, and maybe not getting to talk to a teacher who are feeling that it was rushed. Um, I also felt like our teachers really put a lot of time and effort into giving, through our grade books, specific comments for even kids that, that might not be in their advisory, and not, might not have a, a chance to stop in, or those parents who, they chose not to come to conferences, but they still got feedback from their, from their, from their, each of their child's teachers. All coaching, positive feedback. I would say by and large, things went really well. There are some things that we, we are going to tweak. Like I said, we're not a finished product, uh, and I don't think that we'll ever be. But, um, there are some things that we're gonna tweak in terms of the timing and, and maybe a little bit of the format. Uh, I, I think for some parents, the way that we used to do it was familiar to them, and this was a change, and so it was a learning experience for them, but by and large, we got really positive feedback on it.
I heard great things about it. One quick question with that, um, the needs assessment. Do you think, I heard the, at the Flap, Pla, Pla, the Forest Lake Partnership for Families meeting, when the first needs assessment was done with the two separate schools, got to see the presentation by the counselors. And so I'm just curious, you know, it's, there's so much around mental health and all that in there that, I wonder if it'll look different, some of the data, and, um, I think it would be great to have them come and present if we could ever hear the presentation from the counselors, 'cause it's just great information on what they, they hear from the students in that needs assessment.
Yep, yeah. Well, I would say that what, one of the trends that we have seen already in our data just is that we are seeing, uh, a, a, a heartening, or a, a heartwarming improvement in students' mental health as compared to previous year's data. Um, and so I don't know if that has something to do with in other ex, external environmental factors or things that we're doing as a building. I, I can't, I, I don't feel like I could confidently speak to that. But we are seeing a, a downtick in terms of kids showing that they are having really troubling thoughts that they, that we've seen maybe in past years. And, and that could be part of the program that our counselors are doing, so. Um, but yeah, we, I would certainly carry, or have one of my counselors join me and carry that information back to this group. I, I, it's fascinating information, absolutely.
It is. Thank you for all your hard work and thank your team.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I really appreciated the, uh, standardizing of grading. From a parent's perspective, it's nice to know that, you know, 'cause there are times where you're looking and all of a sudden you see a student, you know, your student missing one or two assignments, and it's really meaningless because the way they're weighting grades compared to other classes, and especially as the kids get older, they figure out how to sort of manipulate that. I've only got to really work toward this, um, and not so much this, especially when they get the older grades, so I appreciate that, 'cause it's eas, makes it easier for the parents too. You know, when you're looking across and seeing where the student's having, you know, an issue in this class, well then when you look, it's, oh, well, homework is weighted more heavily here, and they've struggled with that versus in this class where the test is weighted more heavily, and they're doing well, or vice versa.
Yep, yeah. And, and, and I said this last spring, and, and I, and this is very true. Their, teachers are really passionate on this topic, right? And we had great teacher facilitators that didn't, they, and they did not frame the discussion in, what are you doing and what am I doing, and let's share maybe some of the best ideas of the both, or try to make concessions in order to get to something we could agree on, right? That would be a painful process by which we would probably not arrive at what the best solution is. Instead, they, they did this. They looked at, they read a book on grading by Ken O'Connor. They looked at research that is out there on this topic, and they said, we should build something around these key pillars, the things that make sense, that maybe a kid's ability to do homework or practice, right, might not be common from one kid to the next, by no fault of their own. What's resources to support they have at home, right? So we, but we wanna make sure that kids have an opportunity to practice, but what they, they know and they can be able to do, right? And the amount of time that they, they take to learn, we wanna be, we wanna focus on those things instead. And it, the last thing that we, the one thing that I said, okay, I, I, you, you're gonna create your own plan, right? And it's gotta be a good plan that's founded in what's best for kids. The one thing that we will not do is we are not gonna confuse parents that based on the randomness of a schedule, that you are graded differently from one class to the next. We're not gonna do that. And, 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 and they, and, and I, I got all nodding heads from teachers. They agreed. They wanted to get, come to consistency on this, and I think they've created something really, really helpful as a result.
It's, it's very true to the point that resources at home vary greatly from one student to the next, and sometimes just based on families and the amount of older siblings or lack thereof, and how many sporting events, and things everybody's running to, and, and all the things that go around it, so. It's nice that that's taken into context.
Absolutely. I would agree.
All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Positive Happenings. Anybody like to start?
I'll start. I had the privilege of watching our volleyball girls volleyball win their two section games and hoping to win championship on Saturday, so get out there if you can. I went to the Awesome Haunt Concert, uh, two community conversations, one at Lino and one at Columbus. And then I also went to the ALC renaming meeting. That was very interesting. They have a great handle on it of where they wanna go, and that's gonna be kind of a quarterly thing, and hope, hoping to have a name by, I would guess, this summer.
All right, thank you. Member Corcoran?
You can skip me. I don't have much.
I also was able to go, uh, to the first volleyball game, the next, and would really like to go Saturday and support them. What a hard-working group of young ladies they are. My goodness, it was wonderful. And the concert, every year is better than the first with the Haunt Concert and letting the children try out all the instruments. If people haven't gone, costumes are quite good. Dave Livermore, I'll never forget his shark with the feet hanging out, but, um, it was really good. But the best thing, um, and was mentioned tonight, was the Courage Retreat. And after all my years on the board, I'd never, ever gone to one. And that is sad to me, because now if I was going to be back, I'd go every year if that I could, to see those young people problem solve, and the courage that it takes to stand up at their young age and to admit their own mistakes and, and to wonder about other kids and how they can make them better. So I, I just was very, very happy and pleased that it was put on a very well-done, uh, day. And also in our packet, we had Positive Happenings for our Community Ed, that November eighth is the Community Ed Day. Uh, it's a National Community Edu- Education Day. It's nice that you're gonna be handing out thank yous and notices to your participants and instructors, 'cause it's always good to acknowledge good work that's going on, so. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, member Peterson?
Uh, I also tended a community conversation. It's always great to be out there. And then, uh, tended a couple of football games, and other than that, I've been otherwise preoccupied.
Really?
Member Odegaard?
Nothing personal for me, but I did want to give, uh, use this platform to give a shout-out to Hannah, our reporter, for the, um, article that she did on the levy. That was fantastically well-done. I don't even know if fantastically is a word, but it was very well-done. Super informative, clear, concise, um, all great information. Tough topic to really try to, you know, do in a clear and concise manner. We all know how complicated this stuff is, and, uh, you hit that out of the park, so. Job well-done, and, um, that's the first time I've, I've said that, um, you know, kind of at, you know, in a, in a, in a public way. So I just wanted to recognize you that that is, uh, very well-done, so tip of the cap to you.
Member Tyson?
Yeah, I went to the spooky Halloween party. I go every year. I love to see the little preschoolers in their con, costumes and all decked out. It was a lot of fun as always. Um, I went to one volleyball game, and I know they're so fired up about the Saturday game, the playoff. It's at Saint, with Saint Francis in Andover at seven. So I also went to the Columbus Listening Session, and that was the final one, and we're so proud of those meetings. Uh, community members and a lot of parents have come together, and Dr. Massey did a phenomenal job leading all of those. Um, so that was about it for me.
All right, thank you. All right, reports. Uh, any workshop, conference reports? Community, uh, Communications Committee, member Olson.
Uh, we again reviewed some district communication plans. We talked a little bit about taglines and how that, what our current tagline is, and what we wanna go forward with in the future, and carry over that into many different aspects of communication. We talked a little bit about the levy communication and where that is going, and that's about it.
All right. How about nine sixteen, member Olson?
Our meeting is next week, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Equity Alliance, Minnesota, member Morehead.
This afternoon, I sent all of you the, uh, Education Connector, and hope you'll be able to re, look at that on the internet. We're doing amazing work there, thanks to Jane Mosley and the, uh, staff that's there. They were talking about Reimagine Minnesota and it's going forward again, thanks to Jane. She's been real, a real leadership person on that. I know some of our staff has been involved with that. And, um, we finished up all the policies finally, and are still working on getting, um, new executive directors. So that'll be this next month. There'll be a lot going on with that. They set the, the membership fees for the same as they were last year, and that seems to work out for everyone, and are always looking for new members, but for now, everything's fine.
Great, thank you. Policy Committee, member Tyson?
Yes, we'll have three coming forward tonight for approval, and then there are a few on new business as well as Policy four oh seven, and we're looking for a first reading on a discontinuance.
All right, thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right, and I have Steph Whelfer. We talked about our enrollment update. We try to track our enrollment as the months go by. Uh, we had a levy update, and, uh, talked about Cory McKinnon, uh, working on the naming of the Southwest Building. For the Finance Committee, we had, uh, FY eighteen audit status, the FY nineteen budget status, and, uh, that kept us kind of busy. All right, uh, Curriculum Instruction and Equity, member Morehead.
I was not able to make that meeting, and so I have no report.
All right. City of Forest Lake, member Morehead or member Tyson?
Well, I know that I've talked to one city council member. It wasn't Mr., our, our Houston?
Houston.
Yeah, our Sam. Can't think of your last name. I'm sorry. What? Husbek. I wanted to say Husbek. So Sam Husbek, it wasn't you, but it was another member, said that, uh, we're looking for paid firefighters in Forest Lake. The winter parking restrictions will start on today, eleven one. And then on November fifth, there's an order-
And then on November fifth, there's an ordinance revision meeting. And that concludes that report.
Yep.
I might just add that we welcome the new administrator from Wisconsin. And he started the third week.
I've been waiting for that.
Gunho to do a good job for us. And one thing that's real positive about him, when they were hiring, I spoke with him about working with the school district and the parks. And he's number one in favor of all of that. He thinks there's no excuse for not working very tightly together because schools are very, very important. And in Wisconsin, he takes that as, as a main thrust for him. So, that was good news for us that we're going to have someone there who's going to have our back.
And what is his name again?
Patrick? Casey.
Patrick Casey, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Buildings and grounds, member Olson?
Yes, we reviewed some bond reports. We looked at some signage for the middle school, high school and gym- gymnasium, which is beautiful. And that's going to be very exciting to get out. Bill gave us an update on the Southwest pool, uh, stop parking lot and crosswalks at the Forest Lake Elementary and Forest View Elementary. And Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but my notes say that we got an energy efficient building refund for fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Wow.
Very impressive.
That's the thirty cents.
All right, thank you.
If I may ask, member Olson, what is the update on the Southwest pool?
Well, Bill was just telling us that there, there was a motor problem. And he was able to work his magic and get that motor fixed. So, that's where that went. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Reshaping opportunities for success, twenty fifteen, twenty twenty. Director Martini?
Thank you. Well, I had a positive happening on, uh, Tuesday at Forest Lake area Chamber of Commerce. It was so exciting to, um, have some folks from Rice Creek Watership present, the folks from Bolton, Maine. We had the, um, high school principal and, uh, one of the science teachers present to receive this, um, green champion scholarship award. And what was really most exciting is this is the first time that this school district has won a conference. So, we're really excited, um, that we're getting recognized. So, I thought I'd share that with you as a positive happening. I mean, it's true, every time I show up at the door here, it seems that there's positivity. But.
Wonderful.
That was one of those outside, out of the district experiences that, uh, member Morehead actually went to. So, pretty neat stuff. I just handed out an article that KOMA, uh, presented in their, uh, Inc. It's a monthly magazine. But I thought it was so neat, um, that those architects had originally designed with this purpose. And on the second, uh, paragraph, or the last paragraph of this article, Mark Dubois indicated that he wanted students to be able to see the ductwork and learn that the cool air is distributed through it in the summer. He wanted them to see structural beams and columns and begin to understand more about physics. It was important that it was not just a space to hold a class, that the building itself was a learning tool. And I thought, you know, that stuff's really powerful when they, um, approach design like that. Member Olson mentioned the fifty-six thousand dollar check just today.
Oh, there it is.
And they're practicing for Smiling Dirt Thanksgiving because my grin keeps getting bigger and bigger. We received a rebate on the cooling side of things at the middle school. So, I thought I'd share that with you. Our rebates are well over a hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
We've received so far with much more.
That's amazing.
So, I thought I'd share for the audience, this is one of the photos that was in that article from the KOMA newsletter. And stem colors are just vibrant. And again, um, it's not a rendering. It obviously seems like it's a rendering.
It is, uh, amazing. It's wonderful.
So, Tim Brockman was able to get this picture from overhead of Linwood Elementary. And this is where the construction's focused, um, for the winter into the spring. And so, classes occurring north of that area and south of that area. But what's underneath that will be what's considered the connecting link. They'll be working on the classrooms in between during that same time, on the left and right-hand side of the hallway. But this is the hallway now that connects, um, to normally occupied sides of the building. So, that's pretty exciting. They're doing some more work in another portion of Linwood here. And here's a shot from Southwest. Now, this may be a little bit bleeding, but we talked today about the renaming committee where Jill and I sat, uh, for the Alternative Learning Center. I think we're going to be looking at a committee that's going to rename Southwest. So, here, this is a picture taken overhead. This is the north side of the facility. In the far distance on the right would be the parking lot for early childhood. That's the chiller enclosure that the blockwork you see, uh, through all those red vehicles and the pickup. And tennis court, uh, surface was finally removed. So, here they're grading the tennis court surface that's off to the east side of the facility. And, um, here's a deeper look at the parking lot for early childhood area with the pond out farther to the west.
Mr. Chairman, before he moves on, I don't know how many calls I've gotten on what we're building over by Southwest and how can we build building more if we're cutting? I said, it's a parking lot. I don't know why they think it's going to be a building, but that's out there a lot. So, I'm glad you brought some pictures that we can confidently say it's a parking lot.
And if you'd like me to personally transmit these to your, um, smartphone, I'd be happy.
That would be great. And then also the tennis court area, tell me again what that's going to be used for? Is it going to be just the green space or?
Kids are going to be playing out there with balls.
Really? Outside in the air, playing with balls? Interesting.
And maybe lacrosse equipment there.
Neat.
Well, I can't believe what the media center looks like now. So, demo is going strong in there, uh, other aspects of the building. So, then they could put up the new piping that you'll see in the left-hand upper side. We've got quite a bit of HVAC work going in. Here's another area in the facility that's been demoed. So, they are doing a lot of work in piping up to the ceiling. And let's shift gears to the signage. I think it was really exciting to build the grounds. When I shared the book, I was excited. Now, they both go illuminate at night. I didn't include the rendering there. So, if you'd like to see that, please come to the, uh, planning commission meeting November fourteen. That'll be a seven o'clock meeting where we hope this will get approved. So, this is the three gymnasiums at south end of the high school. And that would be a daytime look, along with FL on the south and east side. And at night, since as we move into daylight savings, we're going to spend a lot of time looking at something.
Oh, my gosh, is that going to be great? What an answer again to the community that didn't like that long white building.
Yeah.
That is.
That was the parking garage.
So, looking ahead, still a lot to be working on. That extremely large addition at Southwest is a parking lot.
Uh, yeah. And, and do we have to have a, um, the water pond? Is that necessary? Are, are they going to have a pond on the end?
They're very useful. The pond for that parking lot is going to be on the far west side.
Right.
So, you can actually see that from remotely. And those retention ponds are wonderful for keeping our lakes clear.
Okay.
Forest Lake is as good as it sounds.
So, Larry.
Go ahead.
Larry, who's, who's on the signage approval committee?
I can get that for you.
I mean, is it city or just?
So, there are city-appointed folks.
Okay.
One person comes to mind, Ron Batty, um, but they're on their website. These are residents that live in the neighborhood, so.
Just curious, awesome.
One quick question, Larry. I, I'm getting asked about the pool as people are seeing when they go to Target and do their errands, action going on at Southwest. Is there anything, changes with the pool or an update or?
So, that chiller enclosure is occurring right outside the swimming pool. So, we're going to be putting chillers in that area to cool the water that we ship throughout. But there's nothing going on inside of the swimming pool.
And no changes?
You did upgrade to that.
Other than what we did with the lighting and?
But that's already occurred.
That's already done. But anything additional now?
No.
Nope? Okay.
No, that's the only portion of the building that we're not touching at this point. So, that exterior wall by the pool, um, we've got chiller enclosure going there. And they're improving some brickwork at the base because they had found, um, some seepage into concrete block. And they had some exposure issues. So, they'll do some brickwork, blockwork and re-waterproof that whole area, but nothing on the inside, all exterior.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, folks.
Keep up the good work, Larry. Keep smiling.
Superintendent's report?
All right, uh, before I get started on a couple of quick items, I'd like to echo the sentiment shared earlier and, um, acknowledge the incredible work that JP and his team have done at the middle school. As you can see, uh, we set out to create a destination experience for kids and we are well on our way to do that. And there's a lot of competition for middle school kids in this community. And I think, um, it's safe to say that we, we're the preferred choice in many, many ways in terms of what we offer kids. And JP and his leadership deserves a lot of credit for starting a new school, coming through construction and being on their feet here at the end of, or start of November now. So, congratulations and JP, thanks for great work there. It's no surprise to you that I'm going to give a quick update on our levy. We are now five days out from election date. And I have said over and over, and maybe this will be the last time before the campaign, that I will echo this because I think it's so fundamental and critical, that the ballot, the two-sided ballot in many cases is full of political races. Uh, one in particular, and Sam in the back, um, it's full of political races from statewide races, uh, local races, judge races and so on and so forth. Those, those are political races. But our levy question is not a political question. It's a values question. And we said that when we failed last year, that the challenge to our community is one of, what do we value for the educational system that we provide for the young people in our community? And we are now, a year later, and that value question, quite honestly, is, um, now in the hands of our voters. And they will need to answer that question in terms of what do they value for the kids in our community? We set spending priorities to make it crystal clear, uh, how those dollars will be spent. There's not a mystery of how those dollars will be spent. Our levy question is crystal clear. Uh, it is precise in terms of what we're asking from the community. And as they answer the values question, the obvious related question is to what extent are they willing to fund what we value for kids in our community? It has been a, a really refreshing campaign and I would like to thank all of the community members who came to our many community conversations. Uh, you folks included that sat at the table and engaged with the community. We've had rich and lively conversations and discussions. A special, um, debt of gratitude to the countless people in our community that have volunteered hours upon hours upon hours to get the word out about, uh, this particular referendum question, the teachers and their work. And a great, um, extent of gratitude to them as well. Rachel D. Sabrino's in the audience. She's one of our three students that you have seen on the news and in the city pages today, from the Minneapolis city pages, along with her friend Reed and Ben, have just been real leaders with the student body. So, thank you for all that great work. And now it's time for the community to, to vote. Uh, the decision, uh, to help the school district close the gap in state funding to increase the district's operating levy for the first time in twelve years is in the hands of our community. This is an opportunity to help the district lower class sizes, restore and expand services and opportunities for students, attract and retain the best teachers and staff, and establish financial stability in order to avert future budget reductions. Uh, the consequences, as we've discussed before, of a failed referendum have been discussed. And the list of reductions that will be considered have been established by the school board. It's been a real honor, quite honestly, to, um, have, uh, worked throughout this campaign to interact with so many community members who have asked questions and sought answers. And I would just make a incredible plea to our community to vote. Uh, we had a low voter turnout last year. Um, we deserve a much more rigorous and robust voter turnout. And I, I urge and plead with the community to get out and vote and to study the issue if, if there's still questions. Obviously, in addition to our referendum question, we have three open school board seats. And we have four contestants for those school board seats, Jeremiah Bowe, Alex Kettle, Kate Luthner and our current board member, member Jill Olson. I wish each of you the best as we approach election day. And lastly, uh, November eleventh is Veterans Day. That's a Sunday. Our schools will honor veterans and celebrate this important day on Monday, November twelfth, in all of our schools in some fashion. Uh, our school celebrations are a real important moment for our students to honor veterans and to learn about our country's history. The high school program starts at ten thirty and the middle school program starts at nine AM on Monday, November twelfth. And I would encourage any of you who are able to, uh, make those arrangements in your busy schedule to get to any of those events. That's it.
Thank you. All right, do we have any items that we'd like pulled from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve seven one through seven four?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great. The agenda approved. Agenda item eight, donations. Member Odegaard?
Yes, it's big dollars in here tonight. Two hundred dollars from the Lino Lakes American Legion Post five sixty-six, the Lino Lakes Elementary, for purchase of classroom flags and holders. Five hundred dollars from the FL dugout club to the high school baseball team for partial payment toward indoor batting cages. Three thousand dollars from the Forest Lake Lions Club to community ed for scholarships for participants needing assistance for classes. One thousand dollars from the Forest Lake Lions Club to community ed for, um, the ABE lunch program. Eight hundred sixty-eight dollars from the Scandia Marine Lions to Scandia Elementary to provide each third grader with a dictionary for Word a Day. Musical sound reinforcement equipment from Joseph Solomon in Marine on St. Croix to the high school music department for music education, valued at four thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. One thousand twenty-three dollars and fifty cents from the boys' track boosters to the high school boys' track team for partial payment toward uniforms. Eight thousand three hundred dollars and two cents from the football boosters in Forest Lake to the high school football team for payment of two ninth grade coaches. Five hundred dollars from the Forest Lake softball boosters to the high school softball team for partial payment toward indoor batting cages. Three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and forty cents from the Forest Lake girls' basketball boosters to the high school girls' basketball team for payment for two part-time coaches. Four hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty cents from the Forest Lake football booster club to the high school boys' soccer team for partial payment of a coach plus, coach bus to Duluth for their section game. Two hundred dollars from American Legion Post six twenty in Hugo to the Forest Lake FFA for general expenses. Beads from Rhonda, Rhonda Achley to Forest View Elementary for student projects. Books from John Schmidt to Wyoming Elementary for classroom use valued at sixty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. And lastly, two hundred dollar, two hundred dollars from the Scandia Marine Lions to Scandia Elementary for student supplies for a total of twenty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. And with that, I approve all of those donations.
Second.
It's amazing.
Discussion?
Amazing and thank you.
And it's so nice to see the donation from the Forest Lake Lions for the adult basic education program. That's wonderful. But it's all incredible.
All right, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, donations adopted. Nine, old business, nine one, mandated reported, reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults, policy four fourteen.
The purpose of this policy is to make clear statutory requirements of school personnel to report suspected maltreatment of vulnerable adults. The policy committee has completed its annual review of this policy and there are no changes recommended at this time. And administration recommends approval.
All right, do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, nine point one.
Second.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
All right. Nine two, mandated reporting of child neglect of physical or sexual abuse, policy five twenty-two.
Purpose of this pa- The purpose of this policy is to make clear the statutory requirements of school personnel to report suspected child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. The Policy Committee has completed its annual review of this policy, and there are no recommended changes at this time. The administration recommends that you approve this as required annually.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This was just revised a year ago. I think we do so much good work around these policies, so.
Very good. All right, if there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
And Member Morehead?
Aye.
9-3, family and medical leave, Policy 428.
The purpose of this policy is to provide for family and medical leave to school district employees in accordance with the Family and Medical Leave Act of 1993, and also with parenting leave under the state law. This policy needs to be reviewed at least annually for compliance with state and federal law. The Policy Committee has completed its work with this policy, and it's been presented with a couple of minor changes related to the publication of the policy for staff awareness, as noted on the last page of the policy. And administration recommends approval.
All right, do we have a motion to approve 9-3?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. 9-4, community use of school district facilities and equipment, Policy 701.
The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for community use of school district facilities and equipment. The school board policy committee has reviewed this policy, and there's a few recommended changes in the policy specifically related to modifications to who and when is groups, excuse me, when community ed takes over the scheduling of our different buildings. As you can imagine, at the end of the school day, most of our buildings are used with school-related activities, and that transitions over to community ed at 6:00 PM, and they take over the scheduling of buildings. So, the changes are related to who is scheduling buildings and when. Administration recommends those approvals.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve 9-4?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to thank Corey, since he's here, we'll thank him a lot for all the work he's done to get these policies, this policy one, where you don't hear a lot of complaints anymore, and everybody feels that they've been heard. And so, I just appreciate his work on this.
A lot of complexity.
Very.
Yes, and I think we had a lot of community input with these committees with Corey as well, and that just goes a long way in having that community input, too.
All right, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call on 9-4.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
And Member Odegaard?
Aye.
9-5, January occupational, January organizational meeting date change.
Yeah, the January meeting is scheduled for January 3rd. New board members do not, are not allowed to take their seat until the first Monday of January. And in order to seat the new board members, I recommend that we move this first meeting of January, the organizational meeting for the year, to January 10th, 2019.
All right, do we have a motion to approve 9-5?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I think this is excellent. I've heard about this at MSBA's trainings, the officer training I was at as well. So, I think it's a great move, and it's about time to do it, so.
That's to be done. It's crazy. I'll be on it, but that's okay.
All right.
But it just makes sense.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
And Member Tyson?
Aye.
Thank you, motion approved. 10, New Business, 10-1, first reading of the Student Sex Nondiscrimination Policy, 421.
This policy is available for your review, and it simply is a policy regarding students stating that students are protected from discrimination on the basis of sex pursuant to Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 and the Minnesota Human Rights Act. The purpose of this policy is to provide equal education opportunities for all students and to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sex. The Policy Committee has reviewed this policy, and there are no recommended changes at this time.
10-2, first reading of the Technology Acceptable Use and Safety Policy, 540.
The purpose of this policy is to set forth policies and guidelines for access to school district computer systems and acceptable and safe use of the Internet, including electronic communications. The Policy Committee has completed its periodic review of this policy, and there are no changes recommended at this time.
Okay. 10-3, first reading, Discontinue Itinerant Teachers Policy, 407.
Yeah, the Policy Committee has reviewed this policy and is recommending that the policy be discontinued as the scheduling of itinerant staff is really within the purview of the administrative scheduling process and really is in line with how we assign staff through the budgeting and staffing process. So, we're recommending the discontinuance of this policy.
All right, thank you. 11, Review Upcoming Calendar Dates. Keep an eye on the Friday updates from our superintendent for additional dates. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we here on Election Day?
We will be here. We will be having live updates. And the Secretary of State's office will be packulating a table that we will have developed from, represented by each precinct. We'll carry the board seats as well on that same table. So, we'll be here providing live updates on our website. So, yeah, come one, come all, and watch returns.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, everyone. End of the call.